I just had a sandwich at Jimmy John's. No, that, I was gonna say of a full belly from Jimmy John's.
Although we're all in queue today, Mark.
Oh, you know, we're online.
Who do we have online? I'll sit here until Ed gets here.
You guys wanna wait for Ed or are we gonna get started, Mike?
Is Ed here?
No, Ed, that's a problem.
Brzezinski.
Yeah, we have copies here.
Oh, I would like some.
You don't have copies?
I, um, I've had a rough afternoon and... Oh, I got this part. I got this part.
Uh-oh, I've been thrown. Sorry, sir.
We can't hear you, Liz.
Try again, Liz.
There's a big echo.
From me?
Still can't hear you, Liz. Hold on.
Kathy, I got one coming your way.
Take the meeting.
What's that?
Liz, do you wanna try talking again?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
I can hear you.
Okay, my comment was that we are not appointing the city council president tonight. And I take offense to the council president saying to the council vice president that he'll be in that chair next year. It's not funny.
Yes, it is. How many people have you asked are ready for your vote?
No, Wes, we're not gonna start with this.
Don't even start.
Okay, if we're all online, uh, we're gonna start the meeting with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, the United States, public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Uh, since we haven't clarified a format, uh, previously for, uh, for this, um, study session, uh, we will, uh, ask, um, Ms. Roznick if she, uh, would like to report first.
Um, I believe the mayor was wanting to make a few statements first.
Okay.
That's okay.
Let people know. Who tend to be minorities.
You want me to take it from here? Great. Are we gonna have this echo the whole time?
It is very distracting. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Just a, it is a little distracting, so... I feel like it's coming out of the... Just one second. I'd like to get this resolved before we move forward. Is that... Mine is still on. Do I...
Still on, do I...
I'm sorry. That's a little better. No, it's, it's just coming from the TVs. Yeah, sorry. Um, do you want me to proceed? Is it, okay. All five of me will, will proceed. Um, as, as the, the mayor mentioned, this is really the beginning of the process for the city with ARP funding. Uh, what we did when we heard about the opportunity, then the, the act, the bill was passed, um, we certainly had to wait for the treasury guidance to come out. Right now, it's still interim. They've not finalized the guidance. Um, the guidance actually wasn't finalized and the, and the, the close, the, the deadline for questions didn't end until mid-July. And you actually learn a lot, uh, through the FAQs that the treasury posted. We understood. We, we submitted questions and, and to, to get clarification. Uh, but in the meantime, we tried to prepare ourselves, uh, in the best way we knew how on, um, the best way to deploy these funds, given what we knew and what we were learning. And we're still learning. This will be a very iterative process as we move forward. One of the things that was very clear to, uh, this administration early on, and has actually been reinforced from people outside the city of Erie and, and across the state, is the city is, is actually far further ahead than most communities in the Commonwealth. And the reason that is the case is because we've done a tremendous amount of planning. And, um, as your planner, I, uh, you know, I've sort of been at the forefront of that. And this is the reason we plan. It is for the opportunities and the times where we actually have the funding that we need to move initiatives forward. But we have done the past three and a half years, we have worked very hard to understand what the, those issues are. And we've done that through an incredible amount of outreach. Thousands of people we have talked to, and I, I tried to do the math, and I got, I got to two or 3,000 we've talked to, either in person at their door during the Summer of Hope and through our other neighborhood strategic plans, through our conversations and monthly meetings with the council of, or, uh, the advisory councils that the mayor has put together. Initially, with those, who, those of you may remember, we did fairly large active or listening sessions alongside the school district when we first took office. And then everything that was done during the city's comprehensive plan, Erie Refocus, which really has been the roadmap for the work that we have undertaken over the past five years. That was, uh, adopted unanimously by city council in 2016, and we have been using that as our guiding document ever since. So these, this planning work that we have put in place has given us an incredible roadmap to, uh, for this, this opportunity that's come before us with the American Rescue Funding. So we will not, we will not, we, we do not recommend that we start over, that we abandon those ideas and those plans because they embody the needs of this community with or without funding. And what this funding has allowed us to do is to elevate implementation of those, of those plans in a way that we not, we weren't, it was not contemplated when they were done. The needs are great, and we feel like we have a very good understanding of what those needs are. A lot of the strategic plans that we've worked on in, in our neighborhoods, the East Bay Front was the first one, really focused on the amount of abandonment, vacancy, and blight that has occurred over the past 40 or 50 years as people have left the city. It has hit hardest the, as the Lower East Side or the East Bay Front planning area, and we know that. What we learned through that process is that the way that we have been, uh, identifying blighted properties, addressing, and trying to intervene has not worked. And what we needed to do was to think of it in a different way. And so we came up with the concept of actually developing Greenway system in place of just leaving vacant lots scattered throughout the East Bay Front. From that work, we moved on to developing a groundwork trust. You might remember all of these things recently. You, East Bay Front Neighborhood Strategic Plan, all of those plans have been brought before you for your, for your support. You've passed resolutions of adoption of all those plans. All of that hard work has now finally paid off. But plans are meant to be iterative. We know that things have changed, uh, and we need to be cognizant of what those changes are. We, it needs to be informed by a, uh, by a community of stakeholders as we make those modifications and we course correct. And what we're, we're planning on doing that as well. So what I wanna impress upon you as we start this is that we are actually in a very good place of understanding of what this community needs. But we know where this is a, this, we will still learn and we will grow as we move forward through, uh, deploying ARP funding. Um, activating our vision, uh, as you may remember, that was announced right before the pandemic hit. So we had this very large, uh, public announcement of activating our vision. What that document was, was meant to do was to synthesize all of the work that we have been doing and planning, programs, loans, grants, housing initiatives, code enforcement, diversity, equity, inclusion. It was all meant to bring that together and really say, okay, how do we know that these programs are working? How do we actually measure success that we feel would equal success? So evaluating ourselves is critical then as it is now. So we're gonna continue to monitor if the programs that we're funding, if the initiatives that we're moving forward with, are they working? Are they meeting our goals? Our goals are, we want to stop population decline. We want to improve the lives of the people who live here. Education is a big part of it. Education isn't the purview of this local government. So that's why we work so closely with the school district. They are, with their ARP funding, they're, they're implementing their strategic plan. That is a, an excellent plan. So we're gonna do the same. So we felt like we had a very good, uh, place to start and understanding. And we came together as administration and says, and came together and said, now we actually have the funding in place, given the treasury guidance of, we call them the buckets or the expense categories. How much do we think we can deploy? How much do we think the need is in the community? And let's start divvying that up. So that's how we've come to the conclusion, or not the conclusion, the recommendations that you see on page five, which is, these are the expenditure categories that is permissible under the treasury guidance as they stand today. These won't change. They might be more refined, but these won't change. So the numbers that we've estimated there really came from internal discussions about what we knew the need was, uh, what we knew our staffing and capacity was capable of, of deploying and getting out the door.
You mean page six, or...
I'm sorry, page six. You know what? I, I pulled a different, a different one, so I don't have the pages. So please correct me if I, if I'm wrong. So you see this chart right here, expense categories. So when you ask, where did you come up with these, when you might ask, where did you come up with these, these, um, funding amounts? It was through a discussion of that. We, we know what's, what's going on. We've been waiting for, for funding. How much do we think we can actually deploy? What specifically those programs and projects are has not been determined, and as the mayor mentioned, everything on this, this sort of overview will come before you for approval. So, um, that's where these numbers generally came from. And we've given you just a broad description of what the, the programs, projects, um, uh, will, will entail. Uh, before we discussed, now this would be page five, the vehicle by which these will be deployed. Fortunately for the city, it's very unlike that, what happens at the county. Um, the county operates very differently, but for the city, we have programs in place, uh, for grants and loans now. So we have people, we have a process, we have an application process. They'll need to be refined to meet ARP guidance. Thank you, Frank. Um, but we'll, we generally have a vehicle, a way of deploying some of these funds. And so our recommendation is we take funding and, and fill those, those programs additionally. So this, that's where you have the direct relief grants and loan program. So this, this you've seen before. Um, transfers. We can transfer funding for agencies that can deploy the funding. What we know now, and we've learned, if we've learned this and heard this over and over again, is there is a need for additional housing assistance beyond what currently exists in the city. People who, uh, meet, uh, low to moderate income guidance, they can get funding through our Community Development Block grant programs. Uh, some can get funding from neighborhood groups that have other grants available to them. But there is a huge missing gap of people who live just above the poverty level, that we'll call them the working poor, don't qualify for traditional funding, and yet don't qualify for some of the, the, um, low to moderate assistance that exist, and are, don't have the benefit of, of living in a neighborhood that has a neighborhood organization that addresses those needs. So those are the types of programs, and also we want to encourage people, we wanna, we want to move the needle from predominantly rental units to homeownership. That will also improve our neighborhoods. Those are the types of programs that we envision the City Redevelopment Authority taking on, on behalf of the city. They work citywide. They already have programs now, and we want them to be the one-stop shop for all housing resources. So the request to, we're, and we'll be talking about this probably in the next month or so over another study session. The, the Redevelopment Authority Board has been putting together a list of programs that they would start to address the housing needs in the city of Erie. And that would be the transfer that, that, uh, would go to the, the Redevelopment Authority. Maintenance of infrastructure, we've already talked about, um, sewer, uh, stormwater, uh, so you'll see those projects come before you. Participatory budgeting is another area. What we are able to do is to enhance our public spaces, particularly if they are in qualified census tracts. And as you may remember, our qualified census tracts are, um, are areas, it's essentially most of the city north of 26th Street except for Frontier. So those are almost everything else in the city in that area is a qualified census tract. The treasury, um, allows a lot of flexibility on how that funding, uh, is deployed and how the programs are monitored, if it's invested in a qualified census tract. There's a presumed benefit. Instead of a, instead of showing a direct benefit, there's a presumed benefit. What we wanna be able to do, and what we're, what will work with you and the, the stakeholders in this community, is to take funding, um, through a participatory budgeting. So it's a very collaborative approach, setting priorities for public space and park improvements in the qualified census tracts. So we'll help identify, working with our public works director, our arborist, our traffic engineer, and the residents of this community in the qualified census tracts, we will help identify what types of projects people want to see that will benefit their lives. And then we will manage the, uh, improvements that are identified through that process. And then finally, we know that there's an opportunity here that we haven't had in the past to have funding go towards, um, leveraging larger initiatives. We call those our public-private partnerships, RP3. What those are yet, we don't know, and I'll talk a little bit about how we are suggesting that we move forward in determining, um, all of this and how, how to measure success. The P3 projects, uh, and the reason we're calling them this is that these would be initiatives of such magnitude and impact that we would see investment and support coming from not only the city, but we would wanna see the private sector and the civic, civic groups also supporting this project. So this is where we would wanna see not only local foundation support, private sector foundations or private sector support, but where federal assistance would also be, uh, would also be warranted. So it competes at a federal level. What those projects are, we don't know yet, and, and, uh, we'll, we'll, we will work on identifying those initiatives over the next life of the ARP funding. So there's, those are, I just wanted to kind of explain and go over what, what the framework entails. Um, we have, not only have we worked internally, but we have met with all of the advisors, council of advisors, uh, excuse me, advisory councils, uh, over the past two months. Uh, we really waited till they had their regular meetings, went over the framework, talked about their priorities, talked about what, you know, what they, what they saw as, as needs. And we've incorporated what we heard, um, into this document. We've also, um, you can imagine the, uh, the, the excitement by many people in this community who, you know, had, know that there's an additional $76 million. If you add the counties, that's another $52 million. And they've reached out too, to have meetings with us to talk about their projects. And we've, we've been graciously meeting with them, but it was not an open call for a list of projects. There was no application process. There was no hint that there would be funding available for their project, but we did, we, we did, uh, entertain those discussions. So that also happened. Um, at this point, we're not having any more of those meetings because now we have a better understanding of how we're gonna move forward in making really final decisions on, on, on how we'll, on how we'll deploy this funding. This will, as I said, we have our plans in place. We have our direction, our guiding stars, our roadmap. But the, I mentioned that this is an iterative process. The treasury has given us the buckets, the categories. We want this, and the mayor went over them. We want this funding to go towards services, um, who, to communities that were disproportionately impacted. We want this funding to, um, to correct the negative economic impacts that happened through COVID. And in order to make sure that we're directing those funds in the right programs, we want this to be informed by a council of advisors. So we are suggesting, and I think this was, I, I, you probably talked about this last night, and I apologize if you've heard about it, if I'm going, if I'm repeating, um, information. But the council of advisors would be composed of city council members, and I believe those were selected last night, but maybe not, and representatives from the groups who are our advisors on a normal basis. And they represent a multitude of different interests in this community. The council of advisors, their role, and that's in one of these sheets, um, this one is the Mayor's American Rescue Plan Council of Advisors. We would ask for representatives to meet just specifically to talk about the progress and the programs coming from the ARP. They are not meant to be the, uh, loan, uh, the loan review board or the, they're not gonna review individual applications. They are being brought to the table so we can ask questions about what does success look like over the next four years? What do we want to see come out of these programs? Help us monitor that. That's come up, we call that a decision lens. What, how do we vet what these programs are to make sure that they're being deployed correctly? Um, and it all has to come with a framework of equity and inclusion. And so they're gonna help us develop what that framework is. Is there different ways to reach out to, uh, vulnerable populations that we're not doing now? Is there a different message? Is there a different program that we need to onboard? Because certain people in this, certain people or populations are not, are not getting to the funding that they need. This will not necessarily cover all of our bases, but we're gonna try to cover everything that we know exists today. Um, they are also, uh, going to report back to their, uh, current advisory committees that they serve on. They will also help network and get the in, information out to their populations that they represent. They will also help network and get the information out to their populations that they represent. They will help us come back and do check-ins on the programs once they're deployed. If there's any problems, hiccups, they're the ones who are boots on the ground, coming back and saying, this is what's not working, this is, is, is working, and helping us do any course correction that we need. And then they're also going to help us market and get this information out. So what's the best way? One, just through social media, we're, we're meeting a small portion of this, of the population. We want their assistance in developing a marketing plan. So we believe that the, the council of advisors, I'm sorry, it was not a very creative name. I had, I went from advisory councils and just flipped the words, so council of advisors will be meeting over the next two years. It could be the life of the ARP funding, which is December 2024. But we, we believe that we, two years is certainly the amount of time that we'll, we'll need them to be in place. And then finally, what you have in front of you is an implementation schedule. This, this I developed just to keep me on track on, so this is the big colorful, easy-to-read schedule. So it's there to keep me on track of when compliance reporting is due. It shows the, the discussions that we've had with our advisory councils. Not everyone's listed, because honestly, I started it after we had met with a lot of people. So, but it starts with those that we've outreach to, we've outreach to our representatives, our elected officials. Of course, city council study session, gives us a timeline of when we believe the council of advisors will be in place, which we'd like to do a call for representation next week, the first meeting starting in, in September, and meeting every other month after that. And then I have my compliance reporting. You'll see down in the administrative steps, we have appropriations, the appropriations ordinance, you've already seen and appropriated the first tranche of funding, which is 38 million. We will be onboarding an ARP program manager. He will be starting on September 7th. The gentleman's duties will be to help, and help manage the council of advisors, help us develop the guidance and the guidelines, be the source for collecting all the information on the progress of the program. So once this money's out, we have to make sure, one, it's being spent appropriately, correctly, and in the schedule in which we need it to be deployed. So if there's at any point that this, this funding is not being spent in the time that we need it to spend, then we're going to have to move it to something else, because in December 2024, it is, if it's not obligated and spent by December 2026, it goes back to the treasury. And the last thing, what we, we don't want to wait until November 2024 and realize that a project is not moving forward fast enough and have to course correct. So those are the types of things that this program manager will be doing to help us keep on track. I can tell you, I've spent a tremendous amount of my time on this work. There's still so much more that needs to be done. We're going to be very, very busy over the next three years, and to have someone who's solely dedicated to this will be a huge, a huge help. And then you'll see that we're going to be working with this council of advisors probably over the next five to six months before, before making any really large decisions. As the mayor mentioned, you, you will probably, what, what we envision is we'll be bringing some projects that are more at the forefront for you to review and approve, probably as early as next September, or this September, October, but you'll be fully informed of what those are, why they're necessary and needed to move forward. But again, this is, this is the beginning of what will be a very long, and I think very exciting time for, for us to move forward. So you do have the representatives on the council is part, is in your packet, so who those, who those agencies are. On the, the back, which I believe is page seven of the framework, since I, I don't have the correct numbering. The, you see the meetings that we've had, we've had. One of the things that I'm, I'm very excited about is, this is an opportunity for us to really think about real solutions to community problems, and actually have the funding to make it happen. And what we are suggesting is we need to identify the biggest initiatives, the biggest issues that we see in our, in our city, and convene people around the table who are part of the solution, and have a very intentional discussion about where the gaps exist, what the services, what services are already available, and how does the city and others come to the table to fix the problem. So it's, it's not really an open-end ask for applications. This is what I'm talking about, is intentional convening of stakeholders around issues of importance. That could be part of our public-private partnership, I would certainly see that that's the way we would, we would move forward. But that is my suggestion on how we deal with really significant issues, is we convene the right people around the table and come up with real solutions. I think it's time that we have a very direct approach to, to coming up with those kinds of solutions. And we started that around homelessness. We met with the homeless, homelessness stakeholders, the Department of Human Services, coordinated care management, and the police department. What we didn't want is to have any more conversation about adding things to the parks so homeless people don't show up there anymore. That is real, that is superficial, it is palliative, and it's not addressing the problem that we really are, that we really want to address. So when I'm talking about intentional discussions and convening around issues, that's what I'm talking about. Get the people around the table, and we're actually coming up with some really interesting ideas. But that's how we would develop, and I suggest we develop larger initiatives to fund, is that kind of intentional discussion. I apologize for talking so much, there was a lot to go over. I think I've covered everything, but if I haven't, and Paul is here to also sort of explain the process, wherever you want. Do you want to sit up here?
Yeah. So really talk about how this comes before you.
Yes. And I think we've all sat through enough council meetings to deal with the process of how money flows. Now, last week, excuse me, we, we approved the final ordinance to accept the money. So the first tranche of cash came into our bank account, it's sitting there, we appropriated it into a new fund, so that we have the money sitting there. Now, once the money, it's decided how to spend the money, we will then follow the regular process. I mean, councils, I think, Ed, you made mention the other night about, or last night at caucus, about council will still have the approval of any money that's transferred will come before you. Any money that's appropriated into any projects, it's, it's all going to come before you the way it normally does. I, I think the transparency of that is, as the mayor has spoken about many times, he wants to make sure council is well aware of everything that's planned throughout this process. So there's not, there's going to be no divergence in any way from the way things normally work. As Kathy mentioned, you know, we're responsible to the federal government. Lisa has a report due the end of April, a financial report that we have to, so we're going to send, we have to send four times a year, financial reports detailing what we're doing, how we're doing it, why we're doing it, all again approved by city council. And there's, as we hired a project manager, we're in the process of hiring a financial person to deal with this stuff too. So it's a big undertaking. Anytime you want to come up and see what we're doing, you're more than welcome. Otherwise, I really don't have much more to say about it, other than everything's going to follow the same process it normally does.
Any, anything else that we didn't go over that you wanted to, Renee, or Mayor, or Ed? Sure, we can just open it up for Q and A, discussion with council.
I've covered it. Just the only thing I would read is Kathy mentioned.
I have no idea what's up with this. No, I'm clear. Kathy, you're clear? I don't know, social distancing with you. Okay. Okay. Parking?
Oh, he might be, he might be there. Well, that's, okay. This is showing muted over here.
Someone try talking.
Try talking, Renee.
Hello, hello, hello.
No.
No.
It looks like she's unmuted, too.
Yeah, it's, it's here, is the problem, because I don't think they can hear us. Can you hear us? Oh, they can hear us, okay.
Should we have our council question phone? It's great, that works.
Try now.
Oh, here we go.
No, I'm going to turn you up, you had to go backwards. Turn halfway. I'll try.
Turn yourself off, Kathy.
This was awesome. I thought we had this corrected.
Yeah, it's good. Full movement.
Is it? Is it?
No.
No, it's a Jimmy John's Rich and Chocolatey Triple Chuck cookie.
If you, if you guys want to go ahead. Whatever, whatever's your pleasure.
Yeah, we can do that. So questions? Want to start with Mr. Brennan?
Is there, you know, typical grants, there's always follow-up report after, I'm sure I expect a report week one, but is there any follow-up at all with the?
David, actually, with, with regard to your question, yes, there will be. This is going to follow all the federal guidelines, so Kathy's, the project manager is going to deal with what's going on, and then the financial person is going to deal with how the money was spent. So it's going to be no different than what goes on with CDVG or home program, anything like that.
Well, that's what I figured, but it just wasn't mentioned, so I wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, so if we give XYZ nonprofit $500,000 to do something, build widgets, the project manager will be making sure that those widgets are built, and the financial person will absolutely make sure that the money was spent in the, in the process of manufacturing the widgets.
Yeah, because of course, the, the process to even select them is, is very selective, like you're going through, making sure you get the needs out there, but also just as fall, as important as the follow-up, and just make sure it's being done properly, and that's, that's in place, so that's good.
And on time. There's no reprogramming this funding in 2024. If it's not being spent.
They need to be ready to go, spend the money, and make sure it's efficiently used.
Yes. So the program manager will also, will also have to have a clawback clause if this, if the projects are not on time.
Great. Yeah, and that's going to take a lot of time, hence, that's why you need staff.
Yes. You don't want me, you don't want, my, my, don't, don't look in my office right now. It's a little, it's a little clunky and cluttered.
No, it's a daunting task, $76 million.
Yeah, absolutely.
For two people to deal with. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be a big deal.
Yeah.
Okay, I think I have you guys on my phone. We're going to see if this works. Someone try talking.
Renee, can you try talking?
Can you try talking? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you. Just let them hear. Renee, middle.
Something happening, talking about, and we go to, you know, next step, and that is that, you know, yeah.
Oh, we lost her.
Lost you.
Renee, we lost you.
She's so, she's so into it right now. I feel so bad for her. She's, she really has something to say.
It's just, it's not a good tech, everybody, so.
It's okay, Frank.
I don't have a solution.
We'll, we'll let Frank work on it some more.
Yeah, did you have another question?
Yeah, I have some, but go ahead and take, take your turn.
Go, go ahead, rapid fire.
Oh, okay. Let me see. For the, I think you already said this, maybe another one of the interests, any, any of the group that requests money, and there's definitely need out there, but they just don't make the list, because I think you said there's how many millions of dollars, but there's only so much available, but we're going to keep those on a list, so that, so that there's future implementation funding, that they would be, you know, already kind of in line or as a program that would be possibly funded in the future.
Yeah, what we would rather see, instead of, you know, making those decisions now, if there's a program, programmatic need that needs to be open to an area that we don't currently have, we would develop that program internally.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily individual asks, it's what are they asking for, how many, you know, what's the total demand throughout the community, and then we might onboard a new program. So right now, you have things like the flagship fund, Commodore Fund, small business development. They, we will be onboarding a, a fund just for minority businesses, so we do see a need that, but there's existing programs, we want them to continue. It's an easy way for us to get the funding out, because there's already a system and a process. So that, it's not the individual applicants that they're informing, it's what's the overall demand that exists that is not, that needs not being met. And some of the requests we've gotten just clearly do not meet even the guidance, they're not even in a bucket that we can find.
They're just personal type of things that don't benefit the entire community?
Exactly.
Okay.
Would not be a negative economic impact or, or impact, or serving those disproportionately impacted, so.
Okay.
We just tell them that, it's, there's, there will never be a program for that with this funding.
Okay. And my last question is this, you know, educating here, you know, the PPP loans were for businesses that were hurting during the pandemic and so forth, but this is not, we're not really addressing that. I mean, the PPP loans were for those businesses, but this, the money that's going to the city is not being deployed to help that situation out at all?
Well, it's, it's, it will be deployed.
I know you mentioned minority businesses.
There is a small, a small business development fund, and there is a, a fund that Chris Groner is, is seeing the need, as COVID-19 Economic Recovery Fund. I'm not going to be due it justice, but you'll see that come before you when that's more refined. What's happened is a lot of these small businesses took, took out loans to get by, and what they need is a vehicle to, to sort of refinance those loans over a longer term. So he saw that as a need and said that would be a good use of these fundings. So he's identified that as a program that would need to be developed first, and then come before council. So that, that's the type of more creativity that we're onboarding with those. But we also, we already have a loan review board, we already have, you know, Chris Groner, who's, who's taking applications of that type and understands that need, so that's why we would consider that, you know, a programmatic part of our programs that we would deliver. But that's, that's like a new, a new program.
Yeah, okay.
So this isn't individual project funding, it's programmatic funding, if that makes sense to you.
Okay. Great. Let's look at.
I had a question, I must have missed something.
I had a question. I must have missed something on. What is the R A C E?
Race?
Yeah.
R R R A, that is the Redevelopment Authority for the City. That's their acronym. The Redevelopment Authority of City of Erie, RACE. Everyone, some people refer to it as ERA. It's not Erie Redevelopment Authority, it's actually R A C E.
And so and I understand that, you know, they are our redevelopment authority. So we would do transfers to them to do exactly what?
So they're developing their their proposal now around housing programs. So it still hasn't been finalized on the proposal that they would bring for for you. That's an area where we would actually have another study session with the Redevelopment Authority and talk about the housing programs. But some of the housing programs that they've they've talked about, they're the ones who really address blighted properties, so additional funding for blight. They lead abatement and let is a is a is another eligible expense and they run our lead program, so they would come in and ask for additional dollars for lead. Housing homeownership incentive programs, so helping us potentially, again, this has not been finalized. Helping people who can't afford PMI insured private mortgage or PMI insurance, helping with down payment assistance if they're if they're locating or buying a home for the first time, things of that nature. Also purchasing properties for rehabilitation, so we do have an available housing stock for people to to own their own homes. So those are the types of program programmatic initiatives that they're putting together and will bring to you hopefully in September, early October.
Okay, so and I understand they are under new leadership, but the race have been woefully inadequate, I would say, serving Erie in this capacity to where we actually took a lot of these programs back in house. So do you think it would make more sense for us to hire people in house rather than give them back to the redevelopment authority who were ineffective with these same type of programs?
Well, I I wouldn't say the housing or the redevelopment authority has been ineffective.
Well, it's an opinion, but it's my opinion. I would.
I don't know what programs have been taken back from them. Now, the under previous management and leadership, I I can only speculate, but it looks like they take they took on more than they could handle with downtown redevelopment initiatives. So we're not talking about this. They run housing programs now. The limitation of the housing programs that they run now is the funding is the funding by which they come to them. It's Community Development Block Grant and lead. So they are very they can only they can only manage specific projects that meet those criteria. What we want to do is enhance that and their ability to do more in the realm of housing. It is under new leadership. And we, you know, we're very confident with the management as particularly not under not just under the employees and the staff, but the redevelopment board itself is brand is new. And they were selected because we we saw the need for more robust housing programs.
It is it is a need and it's a it's a great need, but I also saw us transfer $650,000 to a corporation because our departments have been unable to execute with in these particular programs. And I and it's not something I want to see again. And that and that one wasn't housed, but I but they brought it. The homes programs that you were talking about, they brought them from the redevelopment authority into the Economic Development Office. But we still, between the two of them, have not executed, you know, to my satisfaction, to where they actually, you know, were able to utilize the program dollars that they had. And so that's.
And you're spot you're speaking about the home funding. Is that the one you're talking about?
I'm
There was.
You you mentioned the assistance for buying houses. You mentioned the money for repairing houses. Both of those programs went with unused funds that we ended up transferring to a corporation. I won't mention it because we were unable to execute it.
So I think we need a maybe a further discussion about that. There are some challenges based on the HUD requirements and what was happening with the redevelopment authority, that they were unable to deploy those funds. It wasn't lack of capacity. It was the it was the regulations that they were that was adhered to them. And I think there's just a further discussion about that and it really wasn't the management of the of the funds. It was the requirements that that came along with them. And it's challenging for anyone who uses home dollars in in any capacity. So I think that's not that's not really something that that was a shortcoming of the the management leadership. It's the challenges. Fortunately, with the ARP funding, those challenges won't be as great. The guidance is very flexible and again, qualified census tracts will be where these funds are deployed and so we'll have a lot of flexibility.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I'm not saying that it was their fault, but I'm just saying it was ineffective.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
The end result is the end result.
Sure.
And I want to make sure that it doesn't happen again, like you just said, that we're not sitting here on the December 24th in 2024, throwing money to something else because it's been, you know, unable to be spent in the places that we initially directed it.
Absolutely. I agree with you more. Liz has a she's asking questions through the chat, so I just wanted to make sure you knew that. I don't know if anyone can read that.
Liz, you have the floor.
I think she's going to have the same problem Renee.
She was chatting. She's writing them in the chat. Do you see?
Can Frank read them to us? I can't read it from there.
There's no Liz, can you can you hear us Liz? And if you can, or did you want to type in the chat your question? Those aren't her questions. With the technical problems, can we? Oh, yeah. She just asked about questions. This is terrible. I feel like I should just call her. Liz, do you want to just call my phone? Just call my cellphone. We'll figure it out.
So Ms. Shaw, while we're waiting on Ms. Allen, you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Keys.
This is Liz.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi Liz.
Hi Kathy, thank you. All right, am I echoing even though I'm on the phone?
You're not echoing here.
Okay. My comment is that as I says in an email to city council members this morning, I spent the morning kind of skimming all the studies that have been put together. You know, and and I really wanted to put them in chronological order, but I just did them in the order that they were listed. And one of the things that struck me is that in all those technical advisory committees for the previous studies, and not necessarily under this administration, there were no women of color on any of those committees. I want to emphasize that women have been identified as a group that has been particularly targeted by COVID in terms of childcare, you know, schooling, trying to go back to work when they have to worry about, you know, remote learning. So I would like to make a plea that the various advisory councils who are going to recommend somebody to serve on the council, in particular, make sure women are represented. And it would need to be heard on this. And I would also suggest, because I was looking at all the great job the administration has done with all these advisory councils. I think for 2022, I think it would be real, I know that the mayor and his entire staff, you don't need more meetings. But I think a women's advisory council would be really helpful going forward. I was thinking about some of the frustrations I felt when we were passing an ordinance on the inspection of daycare centers. And we didn't have voices represented from the most women who are operating home-based daycare centers. I just would like to suggest that I think this would be a particular segment where there could be a lot of value in having a women's advisory council in addition to all the other offices that are represented. And obviously, there are women on the various councils. But with some of the things I've worked on, the initiatives in terms of trying to make sure that boards and authorities are more representative and reflect who this community is. Every time I and obviously I Renee has worked so hard on this in in concert with the council, but I I would really like to recommend two things. Women's voices on the ARP funding and then possibly the creation of a women's advisory council to the mayor. I think it might be a segment that that we've been missing. And I would like to see that as as a priority for 2022.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. I'm gonna I'm gonna mute you, but I'll keep you on. So just wave your hand if I need to unmute you. So I'll actually just put her through my speaker. I think Mayor Schumber, Mayor, did you, you're on Frank's phone. I think you wanted to say a few things. Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm not, I I know council couldn't hear me when I did the introduction, but it's very similar to what I had said to them yesterday, so I don't know if I need to repeat that or I guess I'd rely on council to tell me if they want to hear me again or not.
Did you want to hear? She they they did hear your we heard their.
I'm trying to receive five pages of yesterday. The closing statement? You can't hear either. Yeah, he hears us.
Mayor, maybe if you turn your, did you turn your volume off your your computer? Okay, that's better. Did you do something? Maybe he's muted himself.
No, I didn't do anything.
Oh, well, now now it sounds good.
Like you're you're still kind of echoing a lot.
So the 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 question to you, sir, was Liz was speaking in particular about maybe the value of having a woman's council added to the other particular councils that we already exist.
That's something I'm certainly willing to talk about, yes. This is the first I'm hearing it, but if you have people in mind or we could certainly talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Keys. Thank you Kathy for your excellent presentation. Where do the NATO centers come into play? Okay.
These are the community centers. They're they're encumbrance the NCIC. Majority Community Intervention Coalition.
Okay. I am very concerned about our infrastructure. We don't want to have any more houses having their basements fill up with sewer or their walls coming down like that unfortunate situation a couple of years ago where two men lost their lives around the Florida Avenue area. I definitely want to see a lot of money put in for those who are in need. But we also really have to address our infrastructure. We are an old city, not as new as our surrounding suburbs. And we definitely need to make sure that the sewers and the water, all the infrastructure underneath our grounds are taken care of. So we don't continually have problems throughout the winter and every time a storm appears. That's my suggestion because if we don't take care of our infrastructure, it's going to cost the taxpayers a lot because there's so many needed improvements. I just attended the Water Authority meeting today and they have a lot of projects in their works that they have been working on. And we just need to make sure we have a top rate, number one, safe fluid water for all. And I can't say it enough. A lot of people complain about the roads. We need to make sure our roads are well maintained. I definitely want to see the homeless being addressed. I'm not leaving anybody out. But I just really want to make sure that all of Erie who uses water, who use the streets, who flush their toilets are going to be okay and live safely in their houses and not have a situation where they have to leave their homes. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. I have Renee, did you want to say something? I see that we have you on a call right now. Yeah, let me turn you up though and try not to hang you.
Tell us this.
Yep.
Make sure that you didn't miss it.
Turn maybe mute your laptop.
Okay, how's that?
Yep.
Well, you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. Oh, wait, hold on.
You want me to unmute myself on Zoom?
No, I want you to mute your computer. Okay, now. Yes.
Okay. So I wanted to clarify, just a couple of things, reiterate something that Kathy said was that we will not be coming to council with a full list of how, you know, we think the $76 million should be spent, asking you to review that all at once. What we will be doing now is really focusing on these different buckets as they've been outlined. And there will be some things that, you know, because we've already done all of this planning work, that we know we have immediate needs that can be addressed, whether that's putting funding in some of our existing programs, as Kathy had mentioned, or working on blight acquisition and remediation. There will be things that we bring to you sooner rather than later. So maybe as early as September, we'll want to talk to you about some potential projects and ideas. But other things may not come till October, November. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you knew that and we'll be getting input from from you and from the Council of Advisors all throughout that process and having as many study sessions as you want to talk through the different ideas and make sure that you're clear on everything that we're proposing as as we're prepared as as we're prepared with the ideas and prepared to present those to you.
Thanks Renee.
Mr. Winarski, if you're out there, would you like to say something?
What?
You have to call him on the phone.
I don't have another phone.
I'll call Mr. Winarski.
I have to hang up on someone.
If I can take a second.
I have one record saying I trust Kathy for what she's doing. I get frustrated when folks come up to me and ask me what's in it. And I tell them I don't know. The good part is, like I said, I trust Kathy and the crew putting it together. One question I get a lot of times, what are we going to do to help the folks on a fixed income who probably didn't buy their heart medicine so they could pay their garbage fee? Well, exaggeration, of course. But these folks who are living on the same money for how many years got hit with the pandemic as hard as everybody else. Is there some way we can address them or can we get a small council of retired folks, you know, longtime property owners in the city? These are the folks that put out one little bag of garbage. These are the folks that probably don't even water the lawn, so the sewer bills are lower, which is bad. But, you know, there should be some way that we can help those folks who somehow helped us get through this crazy year. Am I off base there, Mayor? Are we, have anything in a coffers for those folks? Maybe a break on your taxes?
Can you hear me? Basically, I want to do things that are going to raise people to a higher level, not things that are going to help them get through the next week or month. So that's the kind of thing we're looking to do. If there's something we can do for those folks to put them on a higher level of existence, I'd love to hear what that is.
That's exactly my question.
Yeah, a couple of, oh, I'm sorry. So a couple of, sorry. I don't want to stop this. We're trying to get the echo to stop. I've got to, I should just hand this to you, Paul. Okay, no, I think I got it. Okay. Couple of things to keep in mind that will help the people who are sort of just getting by is investment in infrastructure will keep the costs of that service at the same rate. So we're not having to increase rates to pay for capital costs. That's one area. The housing programs that we talked about, there are going to be housing rehab dollars that are now going to be much more flexible. So if there is a need to fix a porch, to fix a roof, to fix a window, and they incomed out of CDBG funding, they're not in a neighborhood area that has a group that can serve them, they're going to have that, an opportunity to tap into those funds. The revenue loss, Paul, you can speak to this, you know, not raising taxes for the number of years that have been proposed, that's going to be a huge help to people who are particularly living on the fringe of getting by. So those are just some of the examples of that. And the revenue loss is going to help with...
Yeah, the revenue loss will help without, with the non-raising of taxes, Ed. We'll be able to use the revenue loss to spend money on other things, so those people that you're talking about will not have to worry about tax increases.
I just want those folks to know that they're not to forgotten, many that are holding up the city, because that's what they are, really, you know? With what we have as far as the number of nonprofit organizations or for nonprofits not paying any kind of taxes, there's a lot on the shoulders of those folks. And a lot of them maybe worked 35 years at Hammer Mill or American Meter, a lot of that stuff, you know? They didn't get the reward they deserve, and now they're just keeping their noses above water. Anything we can do to help those folks, I'm all in for it. That's all I have with that. Thank you. And thank you, Kathy.
Okay. So we have been in, you know, discussions within council. We do have a committee that we set up, you know, to start looking into and start, you know, discussing things that we could use ARP money for. And so since no one has put forward any concrete plans, you know, I am working on a plan that where I would like to see, within your plan, we have to get together, where I would like to see what they call loop or loots, longtime owner-occupied properties, to be prioritized. And the way I envision it is we could give 400 grants into a target neighborhood of $10,000 for $4 million. And then on the second half, we can pick another target neighborhood and do the same. And so with, one of the things in refocus, the deferred maintenance and the blight problems that we have, I think this is a perfect time to throw money toward faceting people's houses and neighborhoods and making them more welcoming and more vibrant. And I think that that would be an excellent use of the money. However, the program is actually, you know, put together, still, you know, remains to be seen. But I think, you know, as Mr. Brzezinski said, these are the people who are holding us up and have not abandoned the city, probably had a chance to abandon the city at one point in time, but now, you know, it's, they stayed, I want to help them.
I think that you, I mean, you bring up an excellent point, one we've seen as a need really since we started really working with our neighborhood groups. The Erie Neighborhood Growth Partnership, which is a representation of all of our active neighborhood groups, is actually an advisory group to the Redevelopment Authority. And so what we're going to be doing as we develop the housing programs is doing it absolutely in concert with what they're seeing as the need. And the reason that's important is because any funding that comes from ARP funding into the Redevelopment Authority's program, they're going to leverage that. They're going to leverage that for Keystone Grant Communities, DCD statewide grants, and neighborhood group funding. So the neighborhood groups, take for instance, your facade suggestion, Councilman Keyes, the neighborhood groups have been very, very active and very fortunate to acquire Renaissance block grant funds from the County Gaming Revenue Authority. They can take those funds and work in conjunction with the Redevelopment Authority's housing rehab programs, homeownership programs, and double down on the amount of projects that they're going to be able to do. They're not, they don't necessarily have a limit that kicks in higher standards for housing rehab, like it comes with home dollars. That's one of the biggest challenges with home dollars is once you get over the $24,999 for housing rehab, that everything has to come in code. With ARP fundings, we're not going to be challenged with that. So we really see that as a way, the dollars that would go into race for housing programs, that is just the starting point. We would expect them to match, go after matching grants to double or triple those funds and be able to do even more with them. So I think that's, you bring up a good point, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that the Neighborhood Growth Partnership, which is our West Bay Front, East Side Task Force, serve Erie, Little Italy, Sisters of St. Joseph, Snoop's, East Side Grassroots Coalition, Center City, they're all on that group, and they are advisors to the Redevelopment Authority, which is what has informed the housing program that we'll eventually bring before you for funding. Another area that you might be interested in is this idea of a community land trust. Community land trusts throughout the state have been, actually, the most successful one is in State College. What community land trusts do is they help create affordable homeownership opportunities where the trust would actually own the property, the land, and the purchaser buys the home. And over a certain amount of time, they eventually have full equity in that home, but the initial investment is only just for the house. So it's an easier entry point into homeownership. So they've even brought up and discussed, could a community land trust be formed as part of the initiative? So I think there's a lot of great ideas out there that we can look at for homeownership.
I have one other concern, I guess. You know, I spent 25 years at East High, and although the garden apartments over on Tacoma Road are very nice, you know, that whole area is multi-generational. I mean, I've got grandparents who have their kids and their kids' kids, and they still have not moved out of Tacoma Road into housing. I would really love to give those folks a chance to have a home. I really would. And I'm not saying anything, I worked for Mr. Rand for a while when I retired from the school district, and, you know, they're beautiful, but let's give them a little more self-esteem, give them a hand up, and make things happen for them, too. Because, you know, I'm not lying, they're multi-generational. The grandparents, the parents, the kids are there, and they don't leave. And it's kind of sad in a way because we keep on talking about wanting them to be better and to move forward, and yet their basic needs are taken care of there. And if they try to step out of that basic need area, they get money taken away from them. So they stop trying. Anyway, I'm on my soapbox. Please think about them.
Kathy, excuse me, are we able to, like, take over, let's say, Burton School that is just sitting there on Buffalo Road? It did?
Somebody has to buy it.
They sold it.
Did you buy it?
They sold it? Burton? This week?
Pretty sure they did.
Last I heard, it wasn't sold, but, yeah.
Well, like, old schools that aren't being used? I don't know if that was the only one, but, like, and redo them, like, they did the Jones Building into, you know, lawyer apartments and things, or lawyer offices, what have you?
Yeah, so my suggestion, and what we've done in the past, and recently, really, as since the city is really being eyed by outside developers, is there's a lot of housing developers who do that type of project. They know how to work with the tax credits that are needed. Those are not easy jobs to undertake. So we do have, we do have a local developer who does great work, Hands, can do that type of project. So what we've tried to do is connect them to the school district and to those opportunities. I've had at least two conversations with outside housing developers who work on affordable housing projects, and I've directed them to Burton and Irving School by Washington. I think those are the two that are still, well, Burton maybe no longer, but Irving is still another one.
Kathy, that house in Westlville was a good example, you know, not house, that school in Westlville that converted the housing. I'm not sure who the developer was, but that was a, that's what I think of when I thought of a, they've got a couple awards for what they did.
Well, the, was it St. Joe's Apartments? What's the large one that Hands undertook on West Six? St.?
St. Joseph's.
St. Joseph's, the Orkovich. I mean, that's a great example, Kathy, take you up the building. Is there, is there anything in chat? Okay.
I would love to see also, oh, I just forgot, I apologize.
Sorry, I'm trying to...
So, um, so do we, we only have two people in the audience. Do we want to get through? So, Mr. Buckner, would you like a few minutes? And the other person, would you like a few minutes? I can't see who you are. Oh, that's the news person. Mr. Buckner, you can have a few minutes, since you're in attendance and you're the only one.
Just scream.
It's like shut down. Oh, is it by the screen? Just sit up there, John. Just sit down. Make yourself at home. Make sure your light's green on that.
Can we hear?
We can hear you.
Thank you for the opportunity. You know, when I saw, we are part of the, as part of the Erie Downtown Partnership, we sit on the Erie, the mayor's business council amongst other owners and investors within the community, and this is that opportunity. And we've always applauded the administration for looking at this long-term and trying to have the maximum impact. What is good to hear is that the reality of it is, is you're looking at it from an infrastructure standpoint, because those needs, in addition to the others, can have a really lasting impact. And when you look at the other assets we have within the park system, I understand there's at least, you know, 20, more than 20-some parks within this city, two of those primary parks within the downtown footprint, you know, understandably that they, it's not like all of the money's going to go, but a portion of it. So I think you're really looking at the investment into the assets because it does benefit all within the community. And a park is an area that can be lifting up a person because they might have a bad day, irregardless of age, race, whatever that might be. So we applaud the administration for really looking at how is it, again, this is the once-in-a-lifetime how these funds can truly start to, you know, help us continue the transformation, especially considering the large investment is within the downtown area. It is really looking to rebuild Erie from the core out. So that is very helpful that some of these funds are being directed into a core that can really start to have a lasting return. Thank you for the opportunity.
Kathy, I remembered what I was going to say, and I'm glad you have it here. Blight acquisition and remediation. I'm truthfully, you know, people complain about the blighted houses in their neighborhood, and I just, five minutes before this meeting, was talking to a person who said they are the ones keeping up the property next door. They shouldn't have to be doing that because they are the ones, there's TVs in the yard and things like that, and they are the ones mowing the lawn. People shouldn't have to do that who live next door to these properties. They need to be taken down or addressed as soon as possible because it is a continuing problem that has not stopped since I came into office, and I still see, you know, the houses. And like I mentioned before at a council meeting, there's a burnt house on Buffalo Road there, right after East Avenue, as you turn left into the city, that needs to be wiped out. And there's many other properties like that, I'm sure. Thank you.
There will have that discussion when we meet with the Housing or the Redevelopment Authority, but just, you know, the numbers are staggering. The Redevelopment Authority owns 100 vacant lots, and those used to be homes that needed to be demolished. There are 140 homes that have been blighted and are sitting there waiting for them to be taken by the Redevelopment Authority. And we know that there is probably close to 500 or 600 more that are out there, that there is no market for, there is no demand for, and they're just like what Councilwoman Schaff mentioned, sitting there waiting to fall into the ground. The amount is staggering, and we have only been able to chip away at it. We have to do it differently. What we don't want to have at the end is 1,000 vacant lots scattered throughout the city. And that's why we've talked about, is there a way we can turn them into a green space? Is there a way that we can acquire multiple lots and have a potential redevelopment site for new homes or new townhomes? It's staggering, the amount that's already out there to date. You think it's bad here, at least we're not Detroit. Detroit is taking entire blocks to urban agriculture just to do something. The land bank in Detroit has 80,000 properties in their inventory. That trip, that is two and a half times the total amount of properties inside the city of Erie total. They have 80,000 just in their land bank alone. You can imagine the cost associated with these properties, that these are not properties that are viable for homeownership, these are properties that are too far gone, that there is no market, there is no demand. So we have to do things differently, and we're going to need a lot of funding to do it because there is no one else coming to the table to take this on. And for a very long time, the Redevelopment Authority had very, very limited money to do this type of work. And this gives them an opportunity, along with our neighborhood strategic plans, which show the total impact, or property condition survey gives us the total picture of what's happening, so we can actually do it in a very different way and address it in a very different way. It is a big problem that for too long has not been funded properly by anyone, including the city. So this gives us an opportunity to fill that. Sorry, it is something that is very top of mind for me. I get the calls like you do because we're not doing our job, we're not doing good enough. And I can assure you, we're trying with very limited resources. Hopefully, we can change that.
Kathy, with Detroit, I mean, are they, I haven't seen their plan lay, but at those lots, are they actually planning lots for urban farming? Are they actually, like, the planning department's saying, these areas, we're going to try to promote urban farming, these areas are for redevelopment of housing?
They're planning most, well, I don't know. They have urban agriculture.
Or is it they're trying to bring developers in to do that?
Because, I mean, they're talking, they have square miles of vacant property. So what do you do with that?
There are blocks and blocks in the old Hamtramck area. And the thing that is different in Detroit from our blighted housing is the people went in there, took the windows, took the doors, took the copper wiring, and left the shell of a house. And then one, I was born in Hamtramck, in the Polish village. In the Polish Village, there's probably two blocks of hamtramck that is still beautiful. A lady opened up that restaurant, housing, just way back, and it still exists. And she patrols that two or three-block area. Go outside of it, and it's house upon house upon house with no windows, no doors, no nothing. Just everything's overgrown, just like a battle scene. My buddy took me through there, a little while ago, and he says, I've got good news and bad news for you. He says, the good news is I can go through any red light I want to. He says, the bad news is just no cops here to help me if I get in trouble. I mean, kiddingly, but that is a saga. Detroit is trying to come back with that urban farming. There's a whole lot of things going on there. And hopefully, we have a police chief in Detroit right now that is talking about running for governor. If he should make that happen, I think Detroit will get a real nice push ahead. And we should keep an eye on how they're doing it. Anyway, I'm on my soapbox.
Get great points from Detroit. Detroit, despite their hardships, are doing a lot of things right.
And besides that, Michael, they were ahead 10 to 2 today, and they lost 13 to 10. But that's a story for another day.
Any other comments from council?
Liz, do you want me to call you again? Yeah, I'll call you again, hold on. I dropped her call, so let me, and then we still have everyone else, I think, on these lines.
Hello?
There you go, we can hear you.
Okay, I just had a question for the council president. Is Governor Gretchen Whitmer, is she, is her term limit coming up?
He stepped away from the podium.
I'm just surprised that we're advocating for a police chief to become governor of Michigan when we have a very competent woman as governor right now.
He just stepped away.
Another indication on why we need a women's advisory group in the city of Erie. I don't know when Governor Whit, I believe she's just in her first term. Can you let me know?
What I'm saying is that law enforcement and those kind of personnel are really behind him because he seems to have the grasp of the inner city. I don't keep track of the Governor Whitmer much.
Yeah. I don't want to talk politics now, but every time there is a women's issue that comes up, I'm going to stand up for women. And I hope that this meeting is almost over now.
Mayor and Renee, or anyone, we can, Mayor, I think I still have you on the line. Is there anything else you wanted to add? He says no, he has nothing to add. Renee, okay, she looks, she's good.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, Liz, are you still talking?
Abroad. Yeah, I'm talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I...
The governor of Michigan, I think she's abroad who pushes buttons.
I guess all the city business has been concluded for today. We can have private discussions in private.
Don't forget to call Susan G. Hines, sir.
I'll see ya.
Bye.